I call to order the September 8th, 2014, regular meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and other electronic devices. I also want to apologize to the audience that we're starting late, but we actually began at 4:30 and this is now, I think, the fourth meeting. So, we are sorry to keep you waiting, but had other pressing business as well. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Due to the unexpected absence of our treasurer, Mrs. Witt, I do need a motion from a board member to nominate a treasurer pro tem.
I nominate Board Member Bates.
Do we have to do a second for that?
Second.
If they can find one. And now, what we will do is have to call the roll and also do the vote on whether or not you're allowed to be our treasurer. Shall we try to start with, are you allowed to be our treasurer?
Probably good.
Okay. So, we will have someone call the roll. I will call the roll. Mrs. Bates, Mrs. Kirkland-Dancy?
Aye.
Kaufman?
Aye.
Mr. Coons?
Aye.
Manera?
Here.
Nelson?
Yes.
President Fulton?
Yes.
Thank you and congratulations on this high honor. And now, if you would, please call the roll, treasurer pro tem. Yes, Mrs. Bates is present. Mrs. Kirkland-Dancy?
I am present.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Manera?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
President Fulton? Here, thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special public meeting of August 20th, 2014, the special public, August 21st, 2014, special meeting August 25th, 2014, and regular meeting August 25th, 2014.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as written. Mr. Nelson, as Chair of the Policy Committee, would please present the August 25th, 2014 Committee Meeting Report.
I present the Policy Committee Report as listed in your documentation. And if you would note that there was recommended policies that were amended, and that's for your review. I submit as written.
Thank you, Chairman Nelson. Mr. Coons, as Chair of the Partnership and Public Engagement Committee, would you please present the August 27th, 2014 Report?
Yes, I present the minutes as written. We have some pretty cool stuff happen during this meeting, and I'm probably going to highlight every single thing.
Good.
First off is the Cincinnati Saints, a local soccer organization. Their president and CEO, David Satterwhite, came to our meeting, and he's actually here tonight to introduce himself to the full board. But came to talk about the partnership that has been getting off the ground between him and activities beyond the classroom and Cincinnati Public Schools, creating access to soccer for students in our city that wouldn't otherwise have that access. Also, we did some good housekeeping work with our committee timeline. I think you'll find that the next six months will go a lot more smoothly because of our increased awareness with this timeline for everyone. Another really exciting thing is some internships that we have been developing to assist in our Public Affairs Department. And I believe the positions are posted. Yep. And we're looking for young people that are well-versed in the ways of technology to help us with some of our digital messaging and media and that sort of thing. Also, the Equity Task Force is up and running. They will report to both Partnership and Public Engagement and Student Achievement, most likely, to talk about ways to improve equity and excellence in our district. I present the minutes as written.
Thank you, Chairman Coons. Do board members have any questions about the September 3rd Committee of the whole report? You know, no questions? We need a voice vote to accept the committee report as writ, all committee reports as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Do we need a motion for that? Nah. New business. Tonight's presentation will be regarding Sustainability in Action by the Keep Cincinnati Beautiful Education Team. And I've asked Member Chairman Coons, if you will, to help with the introduction.
I'm not going to steal too much of these ladies' thunder, but I've been a longtime advocate of our district going green in as many ways as possible, and it's been my absolute pleasure to work with Barb Ristonruddy and Marissa Burrows and the entire Keep Cincinnati Beautiful team. I don't know if you guys are aware, but we now have a new water fountain right around the corner there where you can just stick in your reusable bottle, such as this one, and it automatically fills it for you. It also tracks the number of fills. So I think we're, I don't know, we're close to 400, I think, and it was just installed a few weeks ago. So, something we're proud of that's happened here at the board level.
That's great. Well, thank you so much for letting us speak tonight. I'm just going to give you a little background for new board members of who Keep Cincinnati Beautiful is. We are a nonprofit organization, and our mission is to encourage and educate individuals to take greater responsibility in their communities. And some of you may know us from our Great American Cleanup. Some of you may know us from our work with the city with the Neighborhood Enhancement Program. Some of you may know us with that age-old phrase, "Don't trash the natty," which so many people know. And maybe some of you hopefully know us through our environmental education. We have been providing environmental education for the last 35 years, free of charge, to Cincinnati students, and with the goal of growing green habits in our students. And what we have found is that our students, once they learn these environmental practices, they go home and they actually become teachers in their own homes. And that has always excited us and pushed us to go further. When the green building plan was put into place, and really towards the end of all the renovation, what Keep Cincinnati Beautiful recognized was that we could assist Cincinnati Public Schools with a sustainability plan to actually grow green habits in students. And so what we did is we came up with a program called Sustainability in Action, and that would provide comprehensive environmental education to students. It would teach them about recycling. It would involve students and staff to be leaders, get involved in green teams, and at the same time, really focus on waste, energy, and water reduction, which we know certainly these buildings are all about. So we began the pilot in January of 2012, and we did this with a select group of students. And we were able to do this because we found funding both on a corporate level as well as local foundations. And we were also able to do it because we had such great support. We certainly had support from Alex Coons, who really helped to, and encouraged us, to really push forward, that this was an important piece that CPS needed, and we felt that we were really the right people to help with that. So we basically have spent about 18 months in the pilot, and the pilot consisted of six schools. And not only did we provide the comprehensive education, but we were recycling and composting in schools, as well as, you know, having parent meetings and all kinds of things to really make it as sort of a holistic environmental plan as we could. And we learned a lot about it, and we really learned a lot about how, what are the next steps to really making a district-wide environmental plan. And that's where we come into 2013, and I'm going to turn this over to Marissa.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks again for having us. So, real quickly, we're going to kind of go through some points from last year's program. So Barb kind of got you through the pilot. So the last school year, we, on the recommendation of Alex, really decided to take it district-wide and focus solely on recycling. So, we did have a few schools that were still doing more of the comprehensive program. You know, we had a lot of things going on in those schools. But we really thought it would be beneficial to bring the whole district into this program and start with something that's simple and widely accepted, which composting is not. So, we did work on getting recycling on some level into every school. And when we say recycling, we don't mean just paper. We do mean single-stream, mixed recycling. So that means all your plastic bottles, cans, paper, cardboard, glass. And the most important thing last year was cartons. All of those milk and juice cartons could also go into the recycling bin, which is a huge waste stream. So we are really happy to be able to do that. As you can see, some of our results are displayed on the board. We diverted over 250, I shouldn't say we, you guys diverted over 250 tons of waste from the landfill. So that is recycling and composting, mostly recycling. We impacted almost 30,000 students with environmental education. So that's programs that Barb and I and our other coworker Jenna provided in classrooms, as well as assemblies and field trips, all free of charge. And we did also try to provide some other enrichment experiences for students that were really highly involved. So those were really important. We did have 100% of schools that were recycling in the classrooms, so that's a really big accomplishment. A little over 70%, were also recycling in their cafeterias. And those were mostly the elementary schools. The high schools are kind of a different beast, but they're trying. We baked a lot of cookies. Cookies turn out to be a really effective form of persuasion. So, we baked a lot of cookies.
Tell them who you gave them to.
We gave them to the building engineers and their staff, so that they would not hate us when we told them that they had to recycle and pour out milk in their cafeterias. So that worked pretty well for the most part. We did have five green teams, which were in the schools that we kind of had as a part of our pilot program. And those green teams serve as the stewards of the environment in their schools. So, their purpose is to spread the message to their peers and to their teachers and their parents, everybody in their lives, basically. So they were like our little, our little green gurus. And we did have three schools that were composting, and I believe they composted about 30,000 pounds, which is pretty good. And you can see some cute photos of Barb doing a classroom presentation. That's our Ready Set Recycle Assembly, where we had huge props that we had kids parade around on a stage. And also our Wortville Wizard Assembly, in which we use high school students from CPS, and they go in and present an assembly about litter prevention to younger students. So moving on to this year, what are we going to do now? So to make sure that recycling is still up and running, Barb and I, and again, our other coworker, are in the process of visiting every school to make sure that they are still doing what we got up and running last year. So, we're going to continue to check in and make sure that everybody is recycling, nobody's having issues, they have all the supplies that they need, so that we make sure that this really does become a part of the culture in all of your schools. It's very important. Another thing that we're trying to focus more on is high school recycling. We did have some issues last year. You know, like I said, high schools are a much different beast than, than elementary schools. And so, you know, they didn't have all the supplies that they needed. They didn't have all the staff support that they needed. And so, you know, what we're trying to do this year is focus in on maybe one or two schools and really get them going, and to help, help to understand what it is that they really need to make this successful, instead of, instead of it being frustrating to them. So we're going to really try to work on one or two schools. I know Barb has been in Walnut Hills High School a lot the past few weeks, and they're doing a really good job. So that's, that's a success. Again, we are going to continue with our environmental education programs. You saw our Ready Set Recycle Assembly. We're going to continue those this year, particularly in the schools that we weren't able to reach last year, as well as all of our other preprograms. This year, we are really excited to have CPS Sustainability in Action Task Force, which is going to meet three times per year. It's some key folks from CPS, as well as some other organizations that are really invested in this, and are going to help us really push this forward and make it a part of CPS for good. Traditional and social media, hopefully, we are going to be able to promote this program really well this year. Sometimes that's fallen by the wayside because we get a little too busy and a little too in our heads, and we're, we're not very good at that. So we're going to make a concerted effort this year to make sure that we're promoting this program and all the good things that CPS are doing for the environment. The other thing is green teams. Like we said before, they do serve as the mentors and kind of the green gurus of the school. So we want to make sure that, like Barb mentioned before, we are growing the green habits in the students. And, you know, those will continue as they grow older and hopefully spread to their parents and siblings and all that. So that's a very important part of this as well. So at this point, we've done a lot of talking. Does anybody have any questions about this, or how it started, where we're going? Yes.
Yes, Vice President Nelson.
Thank you for the presentation, but I must say, between Alex and my wife, I've gone green.
We're happy to hear that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Because if I don't, I hear Alex on this side, my wife on this side, so I just submit and surrender. But I wanted to ask you, you talked about implementing something in one to two schools this year, kind of as a leading... Do you have any idea what schools those might be?
For the high schools? Walnut Hills High School is statue one. One, I'm sorry.
For sure. Walnut Hills High School, and, and I, we're thinking probably, I think Woodward. Woodward is probably our second school. I mean, one of the things what we recognized was, we did provide, we found funding for the base, baseline supplies for schools. The problem is, you know, with high schools, because they have so many, you know, their campus is so big, they eat in, you know, I'm thinking about Walnut Hills. I mean, they have so many different places that they eat. And then also, they have all these sporting events, and we really want to capture that. And, and that is obviously taking it to the next level. I mean, one of the things about Walnut Hills is they have a couple parents that are really, I call it guerrilla recycling there. I mean, they've taken it by fire. And they really didn't have the supplies. They didn't want to wait until they got the funds necessary for supplies. They didn't, you know, and so I'm like, great, okay, you know, just take it away. So those are, but we recognize, we need to work with just two schools. Let's see how we can sort of design a plan that will really work and be a good pattern, so that we can effectively go into those other high schools as well. But really, we, you need internal interest. You need that infrastructure. And, you know, for some, it's easier to get than others. We know that, you know, high schools are busy, but...
Mrs. Bates, I think you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I do. Well, kind of both. Don't laugh when I ask this question, but how do we pay for our trash pickup? Is it, is it a flat fee, or do we pay according to how much we produce?
It's actually the number of times that they have to come and empty all the dumpsters.
So, it would be a cost savings to us if we increased our recycling program?
No, because the recycling dumpsters have to be emptied also. So right now, we're just about breaking even, because now we've had to have the recycling, so we're emptying the garbage dumpsters less, but the recycling dumpsters more. So, I think, at least that was the end of last year.
Well, I will, I will tell you, though, that the recycling pickups are $5 a pickup, and the garbage pickup is about $12 to $15 a pickup. So, you know, you do see, there is a cost, there is a cost benefit. I mean, there is. What we're trying to do is, I mean, I know it's hard, I know.
Yeah, it's about even right now, and we're hoping we're going to see that cost benefit in the future. But I just don't want anyone to think we're making a ton of money because the school spot, because they were recycling, lots of money was going to go back to the schools. And I did say, I'd be glad to send the recycling dollars back, but then you need to pay for the recycling pickup. And when the school saw the figure, they said, oh, that's okay. So, you know, it's coming along. It's gotten, it's gotten a lot better. We're about break, and hopefully this year, we'll
That's right.
Be in the black, is what I'm hoping.
I think, yeah, I think you're right. I think, you know, obviously, it takes time. I do think you're going to see a cost benefit eventually. I think some of that is us trying to really work consistently and with the building engineers to sort of help them with their own systems, and even, even recognizing how many bags they, garbage bags they use, or recycling bags. I mean, all those things add up. We have looked at smaller districts that have seen a considerable savings. But again, those are much smaller districts, and, and it's easier for them to, you know, to deal with, you know, all that, so.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Coons?
Along the fiscal lines, there are some rebates involved with recycling?
Yes.
How are those being managed, and?
How much did we, what was that, over 2,000?
The rebates are $15 a ton, I believe.
Right.
At least they were. So, at this point, I think they're just kind of helping with the trash bills. But like Barb was kind of speaking to before, there, there is a, I guess you could call it a financial reward for recycling, if schools are doing a good job. So the hope would be, a few years down the road, once schools are really actively recycling and doing a good job of it, if they're recycling several tons a month, there, there is the possibility that at least that school could see a cost savings, even though it might not be reflected on the big grumpy bill that's sent, you know, in a giant packet over here.
Well, yeah, if we've got 250 tons diverted this year, and this is our pilot year, imagine if it's fully implemented, all our schools are operating.
Right.
We go from a $4,000 rebate approximately this year to who knows how much. That could be big, big money coming back to our district. And then also, as Mary alluded to, though the savings aren't huge right now, we know
They're going to get better.
In the future. And it's a slow process changing these behaviors, you know. It's, it took me a long time to convince Chris to recycle. It takes a long time to convince people to make these changes, because we get used to the way we're used to acting. So, I'm glad you guys appreciate it. It's going to be a long haul. And, you know, to make something sustainable, you have to make an investment. I do have another question. Are there any of these guerrilla parents involved in the task force? Have we thought about possibly involving them?
That's a good question. No, but you know what? I think you're right. I think I should invite one of these, one of these parents, because it really, it really does take someone who's committed and willing to help, because we know certainly staff are so busy with other things. Building engineers and custodians are very, very short-staffed, and they feel like they're really, you know, sort of taxed to the max as far as what they need to do. So when you have a parent, and, you know, it can really make it happen. But I will say, you know, I saw a custodian at Chevyatt School, and I said, "How are you able to make this work so well in your cafeteria?" And she said, you know, she said, "Teamwork makes the dream work." And, you know, she said, "I get students who want to help," and she said, "You know, I let them assist in the cafeteria, but only if the teacher says they're doing a good job in school." And she said, "I had a first grader say, 'I don't really know how to change my behavior.'" She goes, "Well, you, once you figure out how to, you know, have a better behavior in class, you can, you know..." class, you can, you know. So we know there are lots of different ways for this to work, and we're just happy to be here to to help grow it, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment, and this is going to date me, but I know back when I was in elementary school, people weren't wearing seatbelts, still remember this? And then they did all of these programs in school, and the idea wasn't just for kids to buckle up, but exactly what you're saying. And my mother would talk about how every time she got in the car, she would hear me in her head going, Mom, put on your seatbelt, Mom, put on your seatbelt. And, you know, one of our strategic goals on the board is around building safe, vibrant communities. And so this idea of 29,000 kids, or how many you said you reached this year, going back home and saying this to their families, just it works so beautifully in our strategic goal of building these vibrant schools, but also, you know, trickling over into our communities.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what we believe in, so. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to make sure that we applaud you guys before you leave. The amount of work that these ladies do, and it is, we're not paying them, you know, that all the extra hours that they put in to make this happen is just incredible, so please.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so we start to go through the announcements and the hearing of the public prior to Mr. Nellm's kudos, I think Member Bates has an announcement.
Yes, and I wanted to make a comment about the kudos. And this stems from the meeting that, well, it wasn't really a meeting because we don't have minutes. It was a gathering of Eve and Chris and myself with elected representatives from the city of Cincinnati, P.G. Sittenfeld, elected representatives from Amberly Village, we had council members and the mayor, and elected representative from Gulf Manor and Chevyat, all the way from Chevyat. And we had this great conversation, and some really cool things came out of that. Number one, I think this one is great, that we no longer refer to ourselves as an urban district. We are a metropolitan district because we encompass not just the urban center, the urban core, we serve seven, and somebody, we forgot Columbia Township, even eight communities outside of our urban core. And somehow, the term urban has morphed into not a very positive way of referring to our big cities. So I would take that suggestion, number one, that we refer to ourselves from this day forward as a metropolitan school district. What do you think of that?
I like it.
Feels with the metropolitan sewer district. I think we're good. MSD.
Only Alex should think of that. We won't take that back.
You know, I don't know, I think that's fun and all. I do think we need to remember that an overwhelming percentage of our students are from the urban core. So, you know, I'm not sure about the whole metropolitan descriptor.
Yeah, I think it speaks to the diversity of the district for sure to talk in terms of recognizing all that participate and all that we serve and all that, you know, are great assets to us. And I will also say, at that same meeting, we heard nothing but glowing reports, Superintendent Ronan, about two of the principals that serve those communities. I think Solomon, Principal Solomon Gray.
Tammy Gray Solomon.
And also our principal at PRM, who is known as Principal Jenny. They all raved about the fact that they are out in the community all the time, participating, and it was, it was actually reassuring and also inspiring to know that that's the kind of site leadership that's out there, and we've really appreciated that. But yeah, good point.
And and the other point that I wanted to make is that the representatives, the elected officials from our outlying communities, not our outlying, our inclusive communities also asked us to give them good news about the district that they could take back to their communities because we don't have control of a lot of the information that goes out. And since it was the elected officials that made this request, the the thought that I have is to have an elected official to elected official communication coming from our board office, you hear that, Mrs. Davis? And that we post our kudos as regular communication, at least to begin with, and as an assignment to the administration, to public affairs in particular, to come up with a template to give to the board office in pretty short order. And we will start sending out our email blast and developing a distribution list so we could get our kudos out to the communities, Cincinnati and the eight participating communities that can track with us, so that these elected officials all hear the good news and they can discuss this information at their, at their meetings. Because right now, they're not getting information about Cincinnati Public Schools aside from what they read in the paper. Or that's what they told us.
It's a great suggestion to to do that, and I think staff is more than able and willing to start to put that together for us, elected official to elected official, and then it becomes part of the official record for those jurisdictions
That's right.
When they have their meetings. And again, they, some of these, we're talking in terms of our principals are showing up at their meetings and speaking and telling what's going on and having the newsletters from the schools. So it's just great. It was a very encouraging meeting. I'm glad you made sure we mentioned it. Mr. Nellm, would you please present your kudos?
Gladly, President. What's your name now?
I don't know.
Okay. Tonight.
Fourth meeting, who knows?
Fourth meeting.
I used to teach high school, so I probably answered to just about anything.
Okay, well, I'll call you President Bolton. I have one kudo tonight, and this is for a longtime retired CPS teacher and administrator, Emily Spicer, for being one of seven honorees in the 2014 Ohio Civil Rights Hall of Fame. Ms. Spicer would be inducted into the Ohio Civil Rights Hall of Fame in Columbus, Ohio on October or in October of this year. So congratulations and kudos to Emily Spicer.
Thank you. Well deserved. And now, Mrs. Bates, I think you have retirements for us?
One retirement. Donald Miller Jr., who was an HVAC technician, has retired September 1st, so we congratulate him and wish him well and thank him for his service.
That's great. Thank you. We're now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Treasurer Bates will have to be the the timekeeper over here. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items or matters. And when your name is called, please come on down to this lower podium down here to speak. And our first couple of speakers are Aline Betts and also Diane Williams. So please join us. And after them will be Zion Williams and Landon Bates, and then David Satterwhite. Those are our speakers for today. Hello.
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 Well, good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Aline Betts, and the poster man is my husband, Robert. And we have formed a nonprofit organization to address the violence that is going on in general. We want to saturate the city of Cincinnati and ultimately our country with the message, when hearts change, violence stops, as you see it on the city of Cincinnati here. We started with a thermochromatic color change sticker, and you have some in front of you, and if you put that on a warm spot, you'll see it change color and see the secret message, which goes over great with the kids. We were invited to give these away at Great American Ballpark last summer. We gave away about 3,000 of them and were received very well. And so coming home from one of those events, why, I, did I mention, we went to two different ballgames? So coming home from one of those events, one of our associates, carrying a big box of stickers, said, well, Aline, you've written children's stories on a retired principal. You said you've got to reach a child by the fourth grade in order to make a positive impact on their life. Write a children's story. So thus was born Bunt the Bad Boy, and here he is. And we've given you all a copy of him. And so after much persuasion, got the little story together, and now we have booklet finished, beautiful artwork by Judy Leopard of Dayton, prototypes done by Grayden Press, gentle, sweet story for kids. And a teacher's guide by Dr. Rebecca Lilly, who teaches in the inner city. And we were fortunate enough to be invited to meet with Chief Jeffrey Blackwell. And so he gave us a wonderful endorsement. He's going to get our hearts on his bulletin boards, and he is willing to help us take this booklet into the schools. Now, I am here to ask you all, how do we make that happen? How can we get a booklet like this into the elementary schools and have a teacher's workshop so that ultimately then the child can take the book home, share it with his parents? So that's why I'm here. How can we make this happen? Well, thank you very much. And what usually has to happen for something like that to occur, to be reviewed and occur, we turn it over to the superintendent to make comment.
Thank you very much. In fact, I'm going to ask Cheryl Rodenex, one of our assistant superintendents, maybe she could walk out with you and get your contact information and
Okay.
And figure out how we could distribute the books and
Okay.
Meet with teachers.
We figure we can reach 32,000 children in the Cincinnati area.
Okay.
So did my buzzer go off? Anything else? You have any other questions? That's, no, I just, I know we all appreciate greatly your emphasis on trying to get to our kids young, and and the message is needs to be carried throughout the community. And we too share your respect and admiration for our police chief, who also was here just two weeks ago, and wants very much to do whatever he can do and help the community find some peace. Thank you. Appreciate it if you take time to look at Oh, we will. Thank you so much. Don't worry about that. Thank you. Now we have Diane Williams, and it looks like a whole bunch of folks
Gamble.
From Gamble Montessori. Welcome back, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you. Good evening to all of you. Happy September. We are all here this evening from Gamble Montessori, and we're excited that school is back in session, excited to be here tonight with just a portion of some of the students at Gamble. And we just have so many things to thank you for, just a plethora of things to say thank you for tonight. And first of all, we just want to say thank you that students don't have a bus fare this year. Thank you very much for that.
Right on.
Thanks to you, we still have our college resource person, and we're so excited about that. And we want to thank all of you, and we want to thank Robin Brandon and her staff for the bright learning environment that Gamble Montessori is transforming into right now. We know you've been invited to come to our ribbon cutting, grand reopening at the end of this month, but we did just want to give you a preview tonight of some of the things that you'll see when you come, and we have that for you. We have you to thank for painting the first floor lockers. We've been told that the second floor lockers have not yet been painted, but we are hopeful that this will be completed, and the students are so excited about that. It's just little things like this that change so much in the students. They are excited and thankful to you tonight for new bleachers and for the basketball court padding. We are excited tonight and thankful to you for the new Gamble school street sign. We are so excited about that. We have pictures of, to share with you tonight about the new Circle Drive that we were so concerned about. It is completed, the road is wider, and it has corrected that traffic flow. Thank you so much for that. We have benches and planters that now are outside our entrance, and we have new auditorium and gymnasium doors. We have new furniture in our college resource center, and we are moved that you not only listen, but that you responded to our concerns, and for that, we're grateful. Ten months ago, we had a parent, at a parent meeting, that said that she was ashamed to bring her children's grandmother to Gamble. And last week, at our open house, I am so happy to report that I watched that mother drop off the grandmother at the new Circle driveway. I watched her walk in, that grandmother, and I watched the students gingerly walk their grandmother up and down the Gamble hallways with pride. And we have you to thank for that. We're all swelling with Gamble pride. So we're looking forward to you coming to our grand reopening at the end of this month. And we have some students tonight, Alex and Landon, that have words of thanks as well.
Madam President, Mr. Vice President, Madam Superintendent, as as President of Gamble Montessori and as United Nations Youth Ambassador, I stand here before you this afternoon to thank you for everything that you have done for us. The students, the parents, and the staff cannot get over how amazing our school looks because of what you have done for us and how well you have gone out of your way to make sure that our educational establishment is up to par. Nowhere is it written that anyone is perfect, yet even some of the greatest people in history have made mistakes. We can sit back and let our mistakes get the best of us, or we can change. Change means making a commitment to learning every day, whether you are in school or out in the world. We can only change if we strengthen the bonds with the people that we work with every day, and you have shown that to us by strengthening our bond with Cincinnati Public Schools for coming out and helping us when we were in need. Madam Superintendent, you once said at Cincinnati Public Schools, we are accelerating progress, offering excellent academic programs, small classes, highly qualified teachers, and after school programs that prepare students for life. The philosopher Aristotle once said, the law is the reason free from passion. Well, no offense to Aristotle, but in my years at Gamble, I have come to find that passion is a key ingredient to the understanding and practice of education and of life. It is with passion, courage of conviction, and strong sense of self that we take our next steps into the world, remembering that first impressions are not always correct. You must have faith in people, and most importantly, you must have faith in yourself, because it's up to you to have courage for the fight that is life. In closing, I leave with this quote and hope that everyone here reflects on it tonight. Life is just like school. You have to be on time, you have to be proactive, and together, work with one another to achieve greatness. And that is why the parents and the staff and the students of Gamble Montessori are here tonight to show you our thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Landon Bates, and I was asked to speak on behalf of the Gamble School on our thanks and gratitude. Our school, when I've been going to Gamble for, I think, five years now, and I remember when I first got, because I used to go to Walnut Hills, and coming from such like a great school like that and then coming to like a school like this, then, back then, it was such a big change for me, and I was really like, I didn't like to tell people what school I went to, when people used to ask them what school I went to, or say, like Clark or like Walnut or something like that. And but now, since we've gotten our, like, I guess, improvements of the school, it's, I'm so proud to say I go to Gamble Montessori High School, and it's such a beautiful school, and I'm so thankful, the bleachers, like, look so nice, and I'm so thankful that we were able to be given those things. I just want to say that it's, going to a newer school, it's hard to start to build up from your school, and it's hard to let people know what your school is. But I feel like with the basis that we've been giving now, it's going to be such a, we're moving towards the right steps to be coming to the school that Gamble wants to be. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you very much to the all of you who are here now, and just for helping Gamble become a great school. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your thank yous, and we appreciate you have representatives speaking, but we want to meet all of the students that are down here, so if if others have things to say, but at least tell us your name and your grade, it would be great. We're thrilled to have you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Zion Williams. I have been going to Gamble for five years also, and I am a June I have been going to Gamble for five years also, and I am a junior, class of 2016. And yes, I do have more pride for Gamble. You know, the lockers and the bleachers, they're purple, and our school colors are green and purple. The lockers upstairs, they're not painted yet. We're hoping to get those painted sometime, but we are grateful for what we have right now, one step at a time. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, my name is Akia Robinson. I'm in 11th grade. I've been there for five years. So I wasn't prepared to speak really, but I'm just give brief how I feel. When we first moved into this building, it was a junior high elementary school previously. And when we moved in, it felt like an elementary junior high school. And with all of us being in high school, it just, it was like, it just, it didn't feel right. But now that we have these improvements, it feels like a high school. We have the painted lockers, the bleachers look like bleachers that need to be in a gym without getting splinters. And it just, it feels right now. And I think it could be room, there could be more improvements and make it feel better. I'm not asking for it, I'm just saying.
Sure.
It just, it's wonderful right now. It feels way better than it was when we first moved in last year. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Toody. I'm a senior at Gamble. I just want to say thank you first off. It was kind of weird coming into, like, when I first came to Gamble in 7th grade, it was West Side Montessori. And now, as moving into our new building, I was kind of like, oh, it's my last year. I hope everything's going to be good, everything's going to be fine. Our lockers won't be this dingy, half-colored blue. We have bleachers, like Akia said, that we can't get splinters in our butts now. But I just want to say thank you for all you've done, taking in consideration into our ideas and our concerns, and just making our everyday at Gamble better and making us want to come to school and taking part in to coming to school. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Anna Dwyer. I'm a junior. And, okay, so usually when people ask me what school I go to, and I say Gamble, they're like, what is that? I've never heard of that. Where are you guys? And I tell them, and they're like, well, I've never heard of that. And over the years, we've started to get more known. And now, when I tell people I'm from Gamble Montessori, they're like, oh, I've heard of that school. They have an excellent rating and this and that, and they're getting better and stuff like that. And I'm really proud of that. And I'd like to thank you because our school is finally starting to reflect what the students are and who we are as a student body. And the improvements, it helps us show our pride in our school, and it makes us look like what we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brandon Rice, and I'm in the 11th grade. I've been going there since 7th grade, so five years. And when I first came here, like a lot of people said, I mean, I mean, when we moved here, it wasn't a bad school, but it was just like, there was a lot of things I wanted to see changed and made better. And I feel like this year, a lot of those things have been fixed, and it just, I just really want to thank you, and it made me feel like you guys actually cared. So that really meant a lot to me personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Dwyer. I'm in 12th grade at Gamble Montessori High School. I've been there since 8th grade. Before I came to Gamble, I was also going to Walnut Hills, like Landon. I chose to switch schools because I was originally going to go back to Walnut Hills in the 8th grade, but then my dad suggested that maybe a Montessori school would be a better way for me to learn. So we went to Gamble, and it was honestly a little weird, but I don't know. Like, when we left, I was like, I don't want to go here. But then, we went to lunch, and we were sitting there, and then all of a sudden, I just felt like, I need to go to this school. I don't know why, but it just came over me. And so when I first started going to Gamble Montessori High School, I thought that it was very different. It was odd, but after a while, I really started to love it. And I'm very thankful that I made the decision to switch schools. Not that Walnut Hills is a bad school or anything, but I think this way of learning is better for me. So when I first started going there, it was a little, I don't know, it's like, when you're in an environment that isn't like as glorious and sparkly as Walnut Hills is, you kind of feel a little weird about where you're going to school. And it kind of honestly affects my learning. I don't know how to explain it, but when you're in somewhere, when you're in a place that looks great and everyone's happy to be there, then it motivates you to do well in school. So it was a little, like, people felt like they didn't really care about their work ethic as much as we do now, since we moved into the new school. And after all these improvements have been made, I know it sounds crazy, but I feel like because the way the school is, everyone's more motivated to work and do what they need to do to get through high school with, you know, good grades, good relationships, things like that. And without you guys, none of that would have been possible, and we would have still been at the old building doing our old thing. But I feel like we're getting a lot better, a lot greater because of what you guys have done, and I'm really thankful for that. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Bethany Ryleman, and I'm a sophomore at Gamble. I was raised in Montessori schools, so like, I went to Dater for my whole elementary school life, and then, you know, I was just like, oh, yeah, let's go to Gamble, you know, it's another Montessori school. And I'm just very accustomed to learning in the Montessori way. And so when I got there, like, we were still in the old building that wasn't really ours. And, you know, it just didn't really feel like home. But now that we're in the new building, and we've had all these improvements done, it really does feel like a Montessori school. Like, it just has that feeling of comfort and that feeling of home. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Well, I'll tell you, y'all did Gamble proud tonight. Wow.
They'll be ready sooner.
Well, they're starting to sing as we speak. Mr. Satterwhite, we hate to have you follow that, but by golly, come on. They can't really, come on down. Thank you, students and faculty. I know there's faculty up there. We appreciate it, you being here this evening, especially those great comments, and we're proud of Gamble, too. David.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's David Satterwhite. I'm the President and CEO of the Cincinnati Saints, and I'm here to just kind of introduce myself and my organization and the partnership that we've been working on with ABC and CBS to bring soccer to the school system and the elementary grades to start. So just a little bit of background for us, we started in 2009. We started out as a community outreach program. We, our first task, so to speak, we coached a little girls' team at the LeBlond Boys and Girls Club, and we'd walk them over to Findlay Park and so forth. And so hence the name Saints. That's how we got our name, community outreach program. We had to take kind of a backseat to that because we quickly realized that more and more people wanted us to help and teach the kids and, you know, pay for them to play and put shoes on their feet and so forth. So we kind of evolved into a professional organization at this point. So now, we have a professional indoor team, semi-professional outdoor team, who actually plays at Taft High School down in, was I considered West End? That's, okay, I always get it confused. But so down in West End. And we also have a women's semi-professional team that play outdoor as well. Our goal for those teams are to make them full pro at the highest level possible in the country. And our goal for being down at Taft is to create a Wrigley Field experience for fans and so forth, because we're so close to the restaurants, Washington Park, all the events that go on down there. So when there's games, they can come, they can stay, and they can hang out and be involved in the city and enjoy everything that's wonderful about it. So what I kind of wanted to just briefly tell, the partnership that we've built with CPS and ABC, I've been working close with Daniel and Alex, and Brian Leschner over at ABC. So we've started out with a girls' program for the 4th, 5th, and 6th grades, and right now, there's 25 schools that are a part of that. And we also have, we're doing a pilot program that Daniel's helping me out with on the boy side. So where we've come in, we've come in to help not only advise ABC on how to structure that program, but also, you know, one of my main concerns was that, was how are we going to fund it going forward? It's great to get a program started, but we're not going to get involved unless we have a detailed plan of how we're going to continue to grow this and make it bigger and so that it's around for the kids, for the long term, not just the short term. So you actually have, I guess, this packet in your docket, I think, from what I saw. I'll give you guys an extra copy at the end with my business card and so forth. But basically, oh, I'm done?
Keep, you go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I was never one very good at keeping on time. But let me get through this here. So basically, our create, our objective was to create an environment that allows kids to, you know, really learn essential life skills outside of the school, if that makes sense. We all know that sports creates several attributes that you need in the real world, whether it's teamwork, discipline, hard work, working and making friends with others, you know, so forth. So sacrifice of, you know, showing up to practice all the time. And that's the same stuff you have in the community when you're trying to get a real job and so forth. So our goals for that is, you know, creating and maintaining a professional environment that the kids can look up to down at Taft High School. That's where we're looking to make our home and continue to play there and continue to grow and so forth. So, you know, hopefully, these kids one day, whether they want to try and work for us or they want to play, what have you, you know, we're also, we're serving as an advisory role again, as I said, for ABC and how to structure it, how to teach the kids, so forth. We're also going to contribute financially to help the program, okay, going forward. We're also going to, you know, help Brian, you know, with us. One of our best things that we can do is go out and find sponsorships and so forth with large companies, so we're going to do that as well. And that's kind of how we're going to look to make it sustainable going forward. And then we're also going to have our professional players come out and teach the kids every once in a while periodically so that they, you know, can really look up to the role models and so forth. So that's basically what we're looking to do, what we're trying to create. You know, one of my goals when I started this was to get back to the community. Like I said, we got away from it because we had to build our media department and hire all these people. We're up to 90 staff people now, which is insane. But anyway, so, you know, I really wanted to get back to the kids. This is a sport that I grew up, I've played since I was five. I played here in Cincinnati with the Cincinnati Excite, Cincinnati Kings, so forth. And when I retired, starting this and giving back to the community was a no-brainer. So I'm glad that I've been able to work with Alex and Daniel and Brian in creating this program, so.
Well, we appreciate your commitment to give back, and I'm very thrilled about exposing our students, our younger students, particularly girls, to the soccer that's so needed in our urban district particularly, and it's crucial. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. And thank you, members, for helping out in that. Yeah, I think we need some of those. I'm not sure.
I did have a question. You know, this summer, we will probably be doing the Taft field, so you...
Yes, I know.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, because we do need to redo that. Okay.
That's fine. You don't mind.
No, we like you. It's just we have to redo the field.
Well, yeah, great. Thank you. Mrs. Bates, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
It's me?
I think so. Yes.
I have...
Resolution amending policy.
I have a resolution amending board policy 2431, interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities, and I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a second from Copeland Dansby. Is there any discussion or question? Hearing none, roll call.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Coons.
Aye.
Mr. Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nels.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye. Mrs. Bates, would you please present your second resolution for board consideration?
Yes, I have a resolution amending board policy 6105, authorization to use facsimile signature, 6110 grant funds, and 6231 appropriations and spending plan. I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second? Second. Copeland Dansby again. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Coons.
Aye.
Mr. Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nels.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye. Mr. Nels, would you please present the resolution for board consideration that you have?
Yes, I will. I have a resolution rescinding board policy 6144.01, swap policy, and I present for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Manera, any questions about this? Hearing none?
I'm curious what a swap policy is.
Oh.
Just give me 10 words or less.
10 words or less. Do you remember?
What was it? Enron?
Kind of. I was young, but...
Yeah.
We're preventing insider trading? Is that...
It was, it was an opportunity to have a financial instrument in the event that we wanted to use it, and we saw how other institutions used it, and it was not used in a way that we wanted to represent our district.
Got it. I trust you guys, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a funny name. Roll call.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Coons.
Aye.
Mr. Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nels.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye. And Mr. Nels, would you please present your second resolution for board consideration?
Yes, I have a...
Policy's been very busy.
Yes, we have. I have a resolution amending and renaming board policy 6151, from bad checks to what would be the name for insufficient funds.
Thank you.
And I submit for the adoption.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Ms. Copeland Dansby. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Coons.
Aye.
Mr. Manera.
Say.
Mr. Nels.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye. Mr. Manera, would you please present the resolution for board consideration that you have?
Yes, I present the resolution approving the yellow school bus stops for the 2014-15 school year, and I present it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nels. Any discussion, comments? Roll call.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Coons.
Aye.
Mr. Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nels.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye. Superintendent Roden, do you have a report for the board?
Yes, I do, and I am so excited to announce the new CPS mobile app is up and running. Now, see, as you can see on my cell phone, I downloaded it from the Android Store this weekend. You can download it from Apple or the Android Store, and we're hoping it really builds better relationships with our school community. Now, some of the items that you can find on there, weather notifications, in case we have another horrible winter this year, district and school-based news, power school information, the district calendar, daily breakfast and lunch menus, because I know students always want to know what, you know, what, they do want to know what's for lunch, a social media post, and other contact information if parents want to know whom to call. So please try it out and spread the word on our new CPS mobile app.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Nels.
Second.
Is there a second? Mr. Coons, thank you. Any... Uh, any discussion and questions of the superintendent?
Yes, I'm tweeting that right now.
Give me a break.
The app is available.
It's available.
Okay, Mr. Coons.
I just wanted to say, I've had the app for like a week now. Um, because, you know, we, we heard about this in PPE, but didn't wanna burst the bubble, so thanks for sharing publicly. It is an awesome app and I think we, we'd all be proud of it. Once you get your fingers in there, you'll see it's comprehensive.
Yeah, I have to echo that. I've, um, used it as a parent now for a week. And I, uh, especially appreciate the direct link to Power School. So, um, thanks, and, um, we, we gave a, um, committee high five to our public affairs team last week, and so, again, thank you, and I think it's a fantastic job.
So what's next?
So, are there any questions or comments for the superintendent's recommendations? Get high marks for the report. Okay, hearing none, uh, we will, uh, have, uh, roll call.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman. Mr. Coons.
Aye.
Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nelms.
Miss.
President Bolton.
Aye. Uh, do I have a motion to approve, uh, the report of the treasurer?
We've asked.
We've fought?
No.
No.
No?
No, it's not.
Uh, the report of the treasurer.
Chris, you wanna revise it?
No, we're not gonna let Chris revise the report.
You gotta make it.
Um, I,
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who is here to be able to answer any questions that we might have.
Uh, I do have a question.
Some questions, and perhaps the superintendent could relay those to the treasurer?
She can't, 'cause she helps me with a lot of things. Um, number 10, um, it talks about the agreement with United Way for, uh, Mount Washington and Hartwell. But it looks like that there are supple, a, a couple subcomponents to this agreement, like with UC and Wyoming Fine Arts, but then we see them separate too, so I didn't, I didn't understand that.
You know, I saw the same thing and had to ask. So in number 10, we're actually getting the money from United Way, and they give us almost $200,000 a year. Then the next two items, we're actually entering into contracts to disperse it. So that's what's happening there.
I understand. Very simple question.
All right, well, we got an answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for, uh, the treasurer's report? Hearing, seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Coons.
Aye.
Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nelms.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye. Uh, are there any inquiries or updates for the board to share? Seeing and hearing none, are there any assignments that the board would like?
There is an update.
Okay.
There is an update related to, uh, I don't know what we're calling this, uh, but our, our shared digital documentation. Uh, Elisa and, uh, board member Hoffman and board member Coons and I met with our administrative team last week to, uh, give a first draft of a document. So, um, I don't know that there have been any changes or revisions to that. So I think the next step should be to push it out to the full board so that you all can take a look at it. The intent of the document is to ensure that inquiries, updates, assignments, and just things that we're tracking are all in one comprehensive place where everyone can see, uh, the work that's being done on each item.
Yep, and then across committees, we, we know what everybody's working on, what's coming up, what's been covered. So I will put as a next step for myself to set it up.
I think the important thing to mention too, our administrative team members, um, um, Pat and Phyllis Sett with us, and they are, um, okay with, with it. You know, it's not, um, any additional work for them.
Okay.
But, um, it's seen as a way to sort of streamline assignments.
Good. Thank you, thank you for that, uh, update.
Mr. Bolton, if I may?
Yes.
I, I call it the digital board bulletin board. Not to be redundant with the board, but.
Too many B's.
We were looking for a title.
Well, thank you very much, and we're gonna refer you to the Public Affairs Department for branding. That certainly would make me look at it. Okay. Uh, any assignments? For, uh, for the administration, yes, sir, or for the board?
Oh, I have one. Um, so today there, there was, and I hate to do this here, but we couldn't get a chance to in student achievement. There was a scheduled phone call with, uh, Jason Cloth, the Deputy Mayor of Education in Indianapolis for 4:00 PM, and nobody showed up except for me. Elisa was on her way, she was running late. But I, I would just ask that you please contact him as soon as possible and try to reschedule that.
I, I think it was Phyllis who was scheduling it, and she called my office and said when it occurred, I would, she'd call me over. So I did not, I don't have the contact, I'm, I'm, but I thought it was the board. I am more than glad to do it, but somebody needs to give me the contact information because I think it resides in the board office, so I couldn't. But I'll be more than glad to do it if you'd like me to do it. But I didn't know the gentleman, nor the organization, nor the phone number.
No, I understand, but we, we had, we had the call scheduled and it was just really embarrassing for me to be the only one there and no one else had come. And it had come out of a previous committee assignment, so, um, looking forward, just wanna make sure we apologize to him and reschedule.
And this was, I mean, this was pretty much a favor on his part as well. I mean, he's the Deputy Mayor for Education. He would have normally delegated this to somebody else on his team. We are friends from a longtime working relationship, so he said he would do it himself. Uh, and for nobody, and I had told him I would be late, so I was picking my children up from school. And so to have nobody there, I will try to reschedule it with him, but I'm gonna guess at this point, we'll probably have someone else from the team, and so why don't we meet offline to figure out how to make sure the miscommunication doesn't happen again? Thank you.
Sounds good. Uh, any other assignments?
Um, I just wanna speak to the comment that, uh, Member Bates brought up earlier today from the recommendation of, um, um, outlying, uh, political officials or what have, uh, elected officials. Um, the, the issue about being the urban school district, I don't, you know, I don't know if we need to have more conversation about that. I just don't wanna look up one day and we're called a metropolitan district. I just really feel strongly about needing to have more conversation about that.
Oh, I think so.
Just based on the recommendations or a comment from some folks who do not work and thrive in our district, so.
But they are part of our district.
I understand, and I'm, yeah, let's be as collaborative as possible, but I'm just not one who likes to, um, you know, immediately just take a recommendation and run with it. So I don't know if you brought that up so that we could have more conversation about it. I just don't wanna look up one day and then the, we're, uh, something different.
I, I,
Actually, it, uh, it, it stems from other observations I've had over the years, being lumped into, uh, a group, uh, of, of districts that even though we didn't intend to separate ourselves from the other, you know, 600 and, 600 and some districts in the state, uh, we are, we have been separated and, uh, have been treated differently because of that. So I just thought it was a good opportunity to separate us from that kind of grouping.
Yeah, you've often talked about the market that we actually are competing with and against here in the southwestern region of Ohio and Hamilton County in particular. So I think, I think it fits very well in having a good discussion about it, even within our diversity issues that
Absolutely.
we're gonna be talking about, so.
Absolutely. And, and too, I think what I heard, uh, President Bolton say was that urban has a, a bad connotation to it, and I just don't think that it needs to. So, um, I'm just advocating for a little bit more of a formal conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
I think with the upcoming retreat, it might be an appropriate time to discuss it, or we can just set aside some time.
There we go, setting aside time when we already don't have it.
Something that we can probably strive for.
We only have one agenda item that day, so we should be in good shape.
I'm being a little facetious. Not, not everybody has responded to Mr. Weaver from my last email with him, so perhaps somebody can suggest that who hasn't yet responded to Mr. Weaver.
That's right, it wasn't me, I did it.
I could do that tomorrow.
I think, uh, I think, uh, this was good, uh, is, are there any other assignments? Hearing none, we are,
No.
Oh, yeah, we aren't adjourned, I take that back. Uh, the chair is gonna entertain a motion to go into an executive session, and Mr. Manera, you have the, for the purpose of?
I moved that the board recess into executive session to consider preparations for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland Dansby. Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Coons. Mr. Manera.
Aye.
Mr. Nelms.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye. Thank you. And we will adjourn quickly into the board, uh, conference room. Thank you all. Good meeting.